You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 30th, 2023 special meeting of the La Porte County Election Board. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Three o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order, La Porte County Election Board, October 30th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in my nation, in its total power, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Roll call, Jim McAlka?
Present.
Heather Stevens?
Present.
And Brody Schaffner, I am present. Any corrections to the agenda? I will make a motion that we amend the agenda to include public comment before old business.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As well as amend the agenda to add to new business, an absentee ballot complaint. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You an aye vote?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm writing.
All right. Any other questions to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We do not yet have the meeting minutes, so we will address it at the next meeting. Time for public comment. This one has. So these are collective copies.
Okay.
Thanks.
Darryl Borton, 800 State Road 212. First picture I gave you was a simple one. It's regarding, it's at Osborne and Indiana Avenue. It's, yeah, Duck Friedman or Fire Friedman. One of them say paid for by La Porte County Republican Party. The other one says paid for by Stabos. I'd just like to know who paid for them and why are they out when it's a city election?
Yeah, I can actually answer that for you because I remember it from last year. This was an issue last year. I believe that Mr. Stabos worked with the Republican Party Chairman, and the first round of signs was paid for by the La Porte County Republican Party.
Okay.
And then more signs were purchased and the party got out of it at that point, and they were paid for by Tim Stabos.
Okay. All right, now on the second letter, second pictures I gave you. Last meeting, yeah, right there. Mr. McCormick stood up here and told you guys he was campaigning for his son back in April, in May primary. It clearly shows in the pictures that he was campaigning for himself in the pictures because on the door knobs, dates are on there. The flyers show his picture as running. Mr. McCormick did not file until July. Now, in the third picture, Mr. McCormick put it on social status of African American males. Picture him being sworn in, which was fine, the two pictures. But then it shows Ronnie McCormick for City Council, a voice for the people. No paid for by. If the candidate has got to follow the law, why should, why can't he? Thank you.
Hello. How you doing? I'm just going to give a brief answer to that, to what he's just said.
You say your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rodney McCormick, Senior Candidate for First Ward, Michigan City, Indiana. Darryl's absolutely wrong. I did tell you guys that I am running for office, and I did run for office. When I decide to start talking about running or getting feelers out there or doing my own, how would I say this? Seeing how many people will support me, there's nothing wrong with me handing out my stuff and getting feedback. Got to file first to do, to file a complaint against me, and he should follow the same procedure. I filed. He needs to file a formal complaint and come before the board and allow everybody to answer it. I don't feel like I did nothing wrong. Unfortunately, Mr. Darryl has a he's the watchdog for the Democratic Party. He's good at picking on people, saying little things under his breath, continually harassing and trying to intimidate people. This won't stop until they want me to come back to the Democratic Party. After that, they probably won't say a word again. It's sad that we are ironing out childish conduct before this board. I hope that you guys will put an end to this. And people have complaints. They should come before this board and file their complaints with you the right way, just like I did, like you told me to do, put it in writing. Those are the things that need to be done. These allegations went on during the parade. Mr. Darryl continued to tell us about we've wrongfully fired somebody at the Housing Authority. He continues to say negative. He just cannot stop, he can't help himself. I forgive him, he can move on with his life. Outside of that, I think you guys are doing a good job. I think it should be some kind of way for you guys to control who gets on those buses. As an independent candidate, I don't have nobody there to represent the independents or the libertarians don't have no one on there either. We have people on there that's kind of questionable, but that's here, that's here nor there. I appreciate the time to come before you guys to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Mr. McCormick, I just can't read this, the print that was given us because it's too dark.
I got a punch.
Yes.
Can you, can you tell me what's there? It looks like green, but I can't, I can't read it. It's too dark.
Vote for the individual and not the party.
That's all it says?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Not on Zoom? Don't have Zoom?
Yeah, today.
Old Business. Tabled complaint of campaign magnets on vehicle belonging to Josh Lane Denham while parked at Trail Creek Town Hall. Can I have a motion to untable that?
Yeah, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's back on the table. Let's have discussion. So Indiana Code 314-117.
So I will say, Ms. Denham, that I could not find anything. Mr. Schaffner could not find anything. Mr. McAlka could not find anything. And it was actually my chief deputy who took the book home and baked her cookies and did a little reading. And she, in 3-14-1-17, was able to find it. Okay. You want to?
Sure.
Yeah.
Government employee refers to an employee of a political subdivision. That's you. In my opinion.
Is that the Little Hatch Agreement?
I believe so. They just call it something.
A state employee. I'm not a state employee. I'm an employee of a municipality.
Just bear with me here. One of them, government employee also refers to employee of the state, but specifically employee of a political subdivision. So political subdivision is all the county, local governments. Okay? It would be very useful if Indiana named this the Little Hatch Act so we can find it, but that's neither here nor there. Property refers to equipment, goods, materials, including mail and messaging systems. A government employee under subsection E may not knowingly or intentionally distribute campaign materials advocating the election or defeat of a candidate or the approval or defeat of a public question on the government employer's real property during regular working hours. Now, the question becomes, is that a distribution? Well, if you put a sign in the yard of town hall, that would be distributing it. So I would think that that would be distributing your campaign materials on your car, knowing it was parked outside for all to see.
It's my personal property, though.
Just bear with me. What is the, what are the thoughts of the board?
Well, if you think, if this is the equivalent of the Little Hatch Act, as far as the Little Hatch Act, I, first of all, that, that does involve issue of federal grants or loans, which I don't know if that applies here. And, and quite frankly, you know, the jurisdiction with the Little Hatch Act is typically or usually reserved for special counsel in Washington DC because there has to be a threshold determination whether or not there are federal loans or grants that are involved. Now, this, that, and in fact, they they define under, I have it right here. They defined it under definitions, and this is the Little Hatch Act, under section 1501, number four. State or local officer or employee means an individual employed by state or local agency whose principal employment is in connection with the activity which is financed in whole or in part by loans or grants made by the United States or a federal agency. So I really don't think that the Little Hatch Act applies in this case or in probably one of the other cases we're going to come along with. More importantly, I think an employee, you know, doesn't say, an officer, you know, a state officer, that is an elected position like, like the town clerk, like a mayor, like a governor, something, something of that effect. So in my opinion, I don't think, I don't, I don't necessarily think it applies. So I'm not inclined to find a violation in this case. That's just my opinion.
You raise a good point as to whether she's an employee or not. You are an elected official. Well, first let me swear you in. This is the first question we've asked you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes, sir.
And what's your name?
Josh Lane Denham.
And are you an elected official?
Yes, I am.
What is your position?
Clerk Treasurer.
Of?
Town of Trail Creek.
Okay. Does your office deal with any federal grants?
If the ARPA funds are federal.
What's that?
ARPA.
So the Town of Trail Creek received ARPA money?
Yes.
Okay. Does that change your analysis, Mr. McAlka?
I don't know. I think on the Hatch Act, I think if there's a complaint by someone, I think it should be referred to the special counsel. And that's what I, that's what I think. Under Code of Federal Regulation 734.102, it says the United States Office of Special Counsel has exclusive authority to investigate allegations of political activity prohibited by the Hatch Act and its reform amendments. So, you know, that's just, that's just my position. And also, I don't know as a threshold question, whatever federal loans or subsidies that you may be referring to, if there is a certain threshold level that would cause the Hatch Act to be invoked. And I think that's why they have a special counsel there to do some diligent research and see, yes, whether or not it does, it does or doesn't fall under that. So for those reasons, I already stated my opinion.
Okay. Stevens?
So this code is actually under, sorry?
Microphone.
This, this code 3-14-1-17, it's just under campaign violations in our, in our code book. I certainly don't think that she, you know, her intent was to violate the Hatch Act, the Little Hatch Act or, or anything else. I don't think it was, I don't think that there was any criminal intent. I don't think it was anything like that. And again, if it was this difficult for us to find, my goodness, I mean, I kind of feel your pain here, so I think I'll, I don't know.
Is there a motion?
I would move that the complaint be denied.
Is there a cycle?
With discussion?
Sure.
Was the magnets when you're at work, please? That way it's not coming back.
Been off for two weeks. Right, do put them back on and drive the streets.
And that's, that's
Because that, there's a question.
Yes. Yeah, I'll second.
I can't imagine a situation where this would not be unauthorized, but because I can't find it, I will have to agree with the board.
Yeah, and just to make note, there are a lot of city and town officials that do the same thing. Not trying to get anybody in trouble, but I'm just letting you know that this, if it's an issue, then it should be in the book.
You were the first one to get caught. My intention is for everyone to get caught and come before this board. So and it seems like we have more public participation online. I look forward to that. So please snitch on your neighbors and friends.
But you couldn't find anything, but you want me to not put them on my car? Okay.
Right, because next time I might.
Okay.
I might find something.
I wouldn't say that we didn't find anything because we did find this code.
Well, I just don't know that she qualifies as a government employee. She's an elected official. I do think this might be a Hatch Act violation, but it is very, it is arguable. So without clear guidance, I can't proceed on recommending you for criminal referral because this is a Class A misdemeanor. Criminal intent, it's not that you intended to commit a crime. It's that you intended the action. So I don't want to go down that path unless I know for certain. So for that reason, is there any further discussion?
No, but I think we should figure it out because otherwise it's going to be a big issue right here next year.
Yeah. Definitely. All right, so there's a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. New business. Long Beach residency voting laws on social media. First, this was, was this a complaint sent to us or was this done on our own accord?
This, this was done by me.
Okay. You want to?
This is one of those things that once you see it, you can't unsee it. And what I had was this, it was sent to me anonymously in a text. And basically it was just, it was a screenshot of a conversation on Facebook and a whole back and forth by a bunch of different people. I thought it was Facebook. So I log on to find it. I can't find it anywhere on Facebook. Somehow I turned into Scooby Doo that day. Ended up downloading the Nextdoor app and I was, I found it fairly quickly. So what we have is we have somebody on the ballot who is telling people that it doesn't matter whether or not you're an Indiana resident, that if you own property here, you can vote here. And let me tell you that that is incorrect. That is wrong. So I feel like this, you know, this person who is on the ballot is spreading some information that can get some people in trouble. And I, once, again, once we know about it, we have to take actions. So that's why I brought this up.
Okay. And the comment and question was be aware that any Long Beach property owner, whether primary resident or not, can vote?
Correct.
Under the username Robert Rule.
Taylor, was Mr. Rule informed of this meeting?
So he was informed. I emailed him October 25th, and then I also emailed him on the 27th. He wasn't responding, so I called him this morning and he informed me that back in September, he withdrew his candidacy. Well, he sent an email to attempt to withdraw his candidacy, but it was too late. The deadline for that was August 1st for small town. At that point, he has to remain on the ballot. He told me he doesn't consider himself a candidate, so he is not obligated to show up or abide by any candidacy rules.
Okay.
And that was the end of our discussion.
I'll remind the public, we have subpoena powers enforceable by contempt of court. What we don't have here is due notice. I don't even know that this is in fact Robert Rule. You are capable of creating a Facebook under any name, and it would require subpoenaing the IP address to geolocate his home and prove that he was home at that time. And while it gets that, this is a felony. So it gets that into the weeds. I would feel more comfortable proceeding if we served him with process, demanding that he appear or else. And he needs at least 10 days' notice.
If I could just ask a question?
Sure.
Is the allegation against Mr. Rule that he did vote? Or he's a resident out of state and did vote in our state? Or just that he put this post on which says that you can vote whether or not you're a resident?
I believe it would be conspiring with a person to encourage an individual to submit a vote illegally. I don't know, I don't know how strong that would be, but you run into free speech versus this. But just like you can't yell fire in a theater, you also probably can't do this. I would make a motion to table this until we can get the proper due process requirements, command him to appear and possibly subpoena his internet service provider. So.
I'll move the tables up.
Is there a second?
Complaint.
Any discussion?
No.
We need 10 days' notice. So I will help draft a letter that complies with all the due process requirements. And I have a feeling we're going to be meeting soon anyway.
We're not meeting until after this election. This is it.
That's 10 days, that's at least 10 days out anyway.
Mr. Schaffner, did you quote a section on that just now when, when you made, you explained to me why we're pursuing this? Just like, got it?
Number two?
Thank you.
I feel like we should put this, this is a a PSA about campaign-related violations and enforcement. I feel like we should put this on our website.
We can do that.
Okay. As like a, you know, well, 22 cardinal sins not to commit.
Green.
And while we're on the topic.
Please, should we vote?
Yeah, go ahead. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's tabled. While we're on the topic, two meetings ago, I said that at this point moving forward, we're going to worry about violations because if I went back the past several years where the statute of limitations still applies and started digging into current officials of government, there would probably be a hit out on me of all the things I would uncover and all the things that I found already. So I consider this, I don't know how my board, fellow board members feel, whatever happened in the past, you got away with it. But moving forward, if we hear about it, if we know about it, we're going to investigate and we're going to do whatever we can, which is quite a bit. So with that, moving on to camp, well, actually Long Beach residency voting, filed by Jeff Bartlett against Carol Tim Tormey, Barbara Beardsley, and Nicola Chalik. Are any of those individuals here? Please step forward. You can, you can come up at the same time. Barbara? So we have Carol, we have Barbara, do we have Nicola? Okay, do we have Jeff Bartlett?
He is an airline pilot and could not be here.
Okay. So do you want to raise your right hand, both of you? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalties of perjury?
I do.
State your name for the record, please.
Carol Tormey, Barbara Beardsley.
Okay. Now, this complaint was for, is it this one?
Here's what he wrote here.
Yes, okay. I know that allegedly Carol Tormey, it should be Tormey, it's misspelled, who is listed on here, has voted with a passport and utility bill. It is alleged that she has an Illinois driver's license. She drives a car that is registered in Illinois. According to the Illinois Secretary of State, Illinois will not let people register their cars in Illinois without being a resident of Illinois. And then another ex Long Beach resident that has moved out of town but is known to have allegedly voted illegally is Barbara Beardsley. So Carol.
Great. Can I bring you some?
Yes.
Because this is an odd script. On the back page, you'll see my IDs. And you'll see I do not have Illinois driver's licenses. Mr. Bartlett? Throwing stones. It has been, we've owned our house almost 25 years in Long Beach. I was right, I was born at St. Anthony's Hospital. My father was born on the kitchen table of his mother's house on 11th Street. It has been, my husband was born, is from Vermont. But this has been our dream. This is where I'm already retired. My husband turned 70 this year. He probably would be too already, but COVID set us back a little bit in our timeline. But our son joined our business two years ago, and we are proceeding on that path. I have already spent more than 190 days in Indiana this year. This is, oh, and you'll see there's a letter because I've never met either Jeff or Kendra Bartlett, but they have sworn out several complaints with me, about me, with our town. And I don't know that you guys have time to look at this now, but I made these for you at Kinko's or not Kinko's, it was obvious now. I think you might find them interesting when you have time. In any event, this has been, this is not something that was particularly
Yeah, we need, we need you to talk into the microphone.
I've never been registered in Indiana. I I also did cancel my Illinois registration more than 10 years ago. And then because of the complaints that the Bartletts had been filing against us, I, I started attending town council meetings, and they were outrageous, to say the least. So I've never been political at all in my life, but I decided, I started to research things. And very few people vote in Long Beach. One of our current council members won his election by three votes. And I don't feel like I'm well-versed enough in Long Beach politics to like become a candidate or even tell people who to vote for, but I do believe in the process. And I, so I decided on my own, I don't have a team, I'm not part of a pack, I'm not part, that I would register voters. And as we just have heard at the early parts of this hearing, there's all kinds of garbage out there about, that says who can vote, who can't vote, who's eligible, who's not eligible. And what you see on the front page, that is my little, I ordered a table from Amazon. This was my little project. And I got permission from the Pontius to sit at L's supermarket and register voters. And I registered far more Michigan City voters, incidentally, than I did Long Beach. And then, once a week or so, I would bring them in to Kristen and Angela, who also continued to educate me about where I was wrong and where I was right. And that letter from Senator Paul's Legislative Aid, the reason it's duplicated on the second is when I went to Office Manchester, I was trying to make a beautiful copy, and then I realized that the date had been cut off. So then I just did the other, so you can see that that was August 17th. So I'm happy to answer any questions you want. I've not done anything nefarious, sneaky, or wrong. And And, uh, you know, any question you have, I'm an open book at this point.
So this is your current driver's license, the Florida one?
Right. And I noticed, you know, in Mr. Bartlett's complaint, he talks about the Illinois Secretary of State says you must be arrested. We still have many businesses in Illinois and I have a home in Illinois. And I have a home in Florida. And, you know, my life is maybe a little more complex than the average person. But it's above board and honest and if you've got a question, that's a legitimate, I can certainly answer it. And I will tell you, when I was looking at the Voters' Bill of Rights, the number one, an Indiana voter, the number one right is that they can vote in privacy. And I almost feel like somebody's on a fishing expedition when I haven't done anything wrong. And I don't mind answering any of your questions because I do believe in this process and I do love this town. But, you know, at some point in time, this guy doesn't even know what he's talking about.
So where do you live right now?
1706 Lake Shore Drive in Long Beach.
Okay, and you've been there for how long now?
About 25 years. But it wasn't our primary residence, but I have now retired. I used to lead a, a non-for-profit in Chicago. And my husband is on the way to, we're heading that way. He turned 70 this year. Our son joined our businesses two years ago. It takes time to wind these things down.
Where is your primary residence right now?
1706 Lake Shore Drive. I have, I've been in Indiana, the state of Indiana, more than 190 days this year already.
I swear, aye?
Oh, okay.
You can ask me, I mean, it's a complicated mess, but I've done everything above board and honestly.
Okay, where, where is your homestead exemption?
Well, I do not homestead in Indiana and, I mean, I know this, it sounds, I hate that I have to stand here in public and say, the fact is that I have real estate that's worth more than my house in Indiana. So it makes more sense for me to take my exemption someplace else. But I did consult my attorney before coming here today and he said that that shouldn't have any bearing on whether I can vote here or not.
Did you vote in Indiana?
I voted this year, it's first time.
In the spring?
I did not vote here in the spring.
Where did you vote last year?
Um, last year I voted in Florida.
Okay.
Did you vote anywhere in the spring?
I did not.
Would that normally make someone ineligible to vote at all for the fact that they didn't vote in the spring?
No, no, October 7th would be the day, but I didn't vote in the spring. I just didn't.
So you registered to vote here when?
I don't know the date.
Fall of this year?
Yeah. And it was funny because I kept bringing in registrations to her for my little project, but I realized that one of these days, ooh, I haven't, I should register myself too.
And so you've been in Indiana for the past 190 days as of today?
It's more than 190, I started counting, but, um, I spent some time here last winter and then I returned from Florida. I think it was May 16th or May 17th and I've been here since.
And?
September 7th is my date of reg.
You did not, did you register in any other state to vote?
No, sir. Well, I was registered in Florida, but.
Are you still currently?
Well, I haven't been back down there, but I did declare that with, I, I mean, I'm not gonna vote in more than one place.
When did your?
You can rely on that, go ahead and check it out.
When did you register in Florida?
Oh, a few years ago.
Okay, and so since you voted, you have maintained that registration?
Yeah, you know, I'm not the most reliable voter, to be honest with you, I mean.
The most recent registration?
But I've never voted in more than one state, ever.
The most recent registration you did was Indiana?
Yes, sir.
And you've been here for more than 180 days?
Yes, sir.
And even though your homestead exemption is in Florida, that's done a year previous to the current year for tax purposes, right?
Yeah, and I will probably be seeking a legal opinion like, because it makes more sense for me to, from a financial standpoint, to keep my homestead exemption there. I mean, but, but no, I, that is the reason why. I didn't know that everybody gets to know that, but that's okay.
Any other questions for her before we have discussion?
I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Mrs. Stevens?
No.
Okay, um, I'll start discussion. She's been here for more than 180 days. The homestead exemption lags behind one year. She's telling us under oath that, uh, she only registered in Indiana. If she decides to vote in Florida, that'll be a problem for Florida.
I wouldn't do that. I'm a respectable, real, I'm a rule-following person.
No, 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 I'm not saying you will, I'm just.
You're just saying yeah.
My job's to plan for the, for the worst-case scenario. I don't see any violation personally. Does anyone else?
I do not.
Stevens?
I don't.
Okay. Can I have a motion to deny the complaint against Ms. Tormey?
I, I would move to deny the complaint against Ms. Tormey.
I will second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 I will say the ladies advised me to get an Indiana license and I very intend to do so, but you know, time gets away from you sometimes.
That's okay.
Anyway, thank you.
You are welcome. All right. Mrs. Beardsley?
Yes, Barbara Beardsley. Actually, I'm not sure why I was on the complaint list because, um, I have owned property here in La Porte County in Long Beach since 98 and I voted every year, that's who I am. And I was thinking the other, when I, on, uh, October the 13th, it was Friday the 13th, that's why I remember it. I thought, oh, you know, I need to stop by and find out where I, where I vote here because I have moved from Long Beach and I'll live in a different address. And it says, I'm Michigan City now, even though I'm very close, but I'm still Michigan City. So I stopped in on 8th Street and the gals there, instead of coming over here, I thought, oh, they're, you know, I've always gone there to pay taxes and stuff like that. And I said, um, I need to find out where I'm supposed to vote because I moved from Indiana and I can't vote in Long Beach because I don't live in Long Beach anymore. And they said, um, okay, that's true. And I said, you know, looking forward to, for the first time since 1998 to vote for a mayor. That's kind of exciting to me. Anyway, she said, well, let me see your driver's license. And I gave her my driver's license. And I had not changed my address on there, um, thinking that we'd moved prior in years past. And when you move to a new state, of course you had to, I didn't even think that I had to change it. Now it was coming up, expired pretty soon, I thought, I'll change it then. And so she looked at it and she said, um, well, it says Long Beach. That means you can vote in Long Beach. I said, what? She said, you can vote in Long Beach. I said, are you sure? I don't live in Long Beach anymore. She said, no, it says on your driver's license you can vote in Long Beach because your, your address says Long Beach. And I said, I don't know. And she's, and she was very, very definite. And I said, okay, um, I guess I don't get to vote unless they vote in Long Beach, is that right? And she said, yeah. I said, okay, well, I have all my information here to vote in Michigan City. I'm gonna have to go in my car and regroup and see who I want to vote for in Long Beach, which I did. And I came right back. She gave me the ballot, I signed it, voted, done. And that was because an official of the Voters', whatever, Board, I guess, insisted, yeah, no, you can definitely, you know.
And you had not changed your voter registration, correct?
No, hadn't because I really didn't think about it. And so I thought, because I was registered, I just, I really stopped there to find out where I could vote for the mayor.
Did they have you fill out a form?
Huh?
Did they have you fill out a form while you were there?
Nope. They gave me a form to fill out for the, the presidential election.
When did you, what, at what point in time was the, uh, individual telling you that you could vote in, um, Long Beach? When was that?
That was October the 13th, Friday the 13th.
Of?
October this year.
Oh, this year?
Of course, yes.
And where did you go? Where did you go, where was that at?
8th Street.
Do you know who told you that?
I didn't take her name down, no. She's a representative of, of the county, I suppose.
Yeah, and they actually did it properly because that's where she's registered. So she has not, she hasn't changed her registration yet. You would go back to your old precinct one time. So they, they did it right.
Okay.
Yeah, but they should have had you fill that form out while you were there.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
I mean, I'm not trying to pull anything.
No, we know.
I think a lot of people in Long Beach pull a lot of stuff, that's not me.
I get it, I get it. So they were, yeah, they did it. They're, they're good.
So I'm okay, I didn't do anything wrong?
Not in my mind, nothing.
I didn't think so either, I'm like, why am I going here? And I did not get a notification. Obviously you sent it to the wrong address, well, the address that you had for me. So I didn't get it and I wouldn't have known this if a friend hadn't called me and said, what the heck is this, Barb? And I'm like, I have no idea. Well, I haven't slept in two nights because it's just been worrying me. I knew I was doing the right thing because they told me if it wasn't right, I shouldn't have been there. So, and they should have told me that.
I, I would make a motion to dismiss this complaint.
Just like?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, campaign-related violations and enforcement filed by Rodney McCormick.
May I have Ian Osborne come up here as well?
Yeah, just give me one second. Uh, promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, under penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
State your name.
Rodney Joseph McCormick, Sr.
And if you'd like, uh, Mr. Osborne? Is he gonna be speaking?
Yes, I believe he will.
Okay. Mr. Osborne? Uh, raise your right hand, promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, under penalties of perjury?
Yes, sir, I do.
And state your name.
Ian Osborne.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McCormick, do you want to rest on your complaint or do you want to expand?
Yes, I want to expand on my complaint. There's been a lot of friction going on with myself and, um, Mr. Dabney because, uh, the way I make comments about regarding, uh, when he's at the city council meetings and I questioned him a lot, so, um, I got involved with this and I was joining the Eastport Association. I was left out of several meetings at the Eastport Association. The meetings are always held at the Michigan City Fire Training Center, which is owned by the City of Michigan City. I received a, I received a flyer and, well, I received numerous complaints that Mr. Dabney was bringing another individual to the Eastport Association meetings. He continued to talk about he's running for First Ward. I mean, he's running at large now. He's bringing another person in by the name of Greg Coulter, introducing him as he's running for the First Ward and so on and so on. I don't usually say nothing about hearsay, I don't go off hearsay. And I asked the person, which was Ian Osborne, does, do you have proof of that? And he sent me a flyer. You have that flyer, that's attached. Since this, since that time, it's been brought to my attention. Well, let me go, let me go back. I called Mr. Dabney and I asked him, um, was this true?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I called Mr. Dabney and asked, was this true? The whole time, the phone call was being monitored and recorded. I just, uh, asked him, what was this, is this true? He, um, denied the allegations. He said he just, he just helped Mr. Coulter, Greg Coulter accidentally put a sign in his yard. That's about the extent of it. Uh, where, and then he asked me, where did I get this information from? And I told him, Ian Osborne. And then Mr. Dabney was very upset, used a racial slur to describe Mr. Coulter and then, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Osborne, forgive me. And, um, also stated that he wanted to punch him in the back of the head. I didn't understand why he went through that extreme with what he said. I just wanted to know, was it true? And he said, yes, it was true. He said he invite candidates to the association because he doesn't like me, he does it out of spite. He did it out of spite. My question becomes now, can you campaign on the city property? I believe that you cannot be having campaign, you can't be campaigning or announcing stuff at a, uh, at a city-owned property.
Which piece of city-owned property are you referring?
That will be the, that'll be the Michigan City Fire Training Center. I, I think I have the address in the complaint. I believe it is, uh, 2510 East Michigan Boulevard. And if I can just let Mr. Osborne explain where he got the flyer from and that he verified that he sent it to me. And, um, we can go from there, if you give me one second, please.
Go ahead.
So I'm the Secretary of the newly-reformed Eastport Neighborhood Association. Through this transition of our election to, uh, assemble a new Board of Directors for which Mr. Dabney was the, um,
There you go.
Mr. Dabney was the president of the Eastport Neighborhood Association prior to the election. When we took over the Eastport Neighborhood Association, we also took over the, uh, Facebook page, which, and the email list. This was our goal from the beginning, was to take it over. I was unable to get this information upon request for a couple of months until finally I had threatened to, uh, ask for this and request it during a city council meeting. Then, once we got the, uh, the, the page, then one of the reasons why we wanted to get control of the Facebook page was because on the Facebook page, it was being used to promote partisan politics. So that's against our newly-formed Articles of Incorporation and Bylaws. It's against our charter to use the Neighborhood Association for any political purpose whatsoever, whether it be partisan or bipartisan, uh, campaigning or otherwise. So, uh, this was not in place at the time. It is now officially, so, you know, no harm, no foul there, uh, until, you know, the, it was brought up. But I guess to Rodney's point is, can a city building, like a fire department, be used to, uh, to campaign? Whether it be harmlessly in terms of just saying, you know, hey, I'm, I'm the city councilman and I'm now running for a city council at large and using that as a, as a way of introducing yourself each time that you introduce yourself in a public meeting in a public place, uh, like a fire station. So the secondary part of that was, uh, I was, in fact, part of a monitored phone call uh, with Rodney McCormick in which, uh, he confronted him about this issue. The flyer was the first thing that he had confronted him about. On the Facebook page, the flyer that you'll see, it didn't specify the location. So we had no way of knowing what that location was except for the fact that the firehouse had been the, the location for every other meeting that had been held in regards to the Eastport Neighborhood Association for which, where that flyer was posted. So, uh, when I brought it to Rodney's attention, uh, then now this is kind of brought it to this point. When he confronted, um, Councilman Dabney about the issue, then, uh, he had, Councilman Dabney had told Rodney that he was backing, uh, Coulter, Greg Coulter for First Ward and that he had done what he was doing in order to antagonize him. And then when, as Rodney had said, when he was confronted about, you know, when he was asked who told him that and then it was me, then that's when the racial slur happened and when he suggested or when he said that he would like to punch me in the back of the head, for which we have a second witness also. We were shooting pool, the phone was on mute and, um, you know, it is what it is. So I guess ultimately we're here and now that we have, it's been brought to our attention that the flyer was from a, was potentially from an event that was held at another location. None of us were there, we don't know, so it is what it is. But the question still remains is can a city building be used for campaigning?
And I'm going to, uh, sum this up. Mr. Dabney, um, shows up at all the, um, meet and greets and he's, he bolsters that he's a member of or the president of the following organization, the Canada, Canada Park Association, the homeowners shared of Sheridan Beach Association and Elston Grove Association.
And the Eastport.
And, and, well, he's no longer at the Eastport Association. So that kind of like, um, but yeah, he does brag about that as well. We don't understand how the election board allow these, all these associations to only exist during election time and they are doing this, um, I believe that Canada, not the. I believe that Canada, that the Elston Grove may be receiving funds from the city in a, in a way. But I just don't understand why all these associations exist. And all they do is, it should be nonpartisan, but it's, it's not. It, it, they, they only push Democrats. And it's just, um, to me, it's just, it's just bad. Um, I had members in the Elston Grove area just recently told me Mr. Dabney, uh, was at the Elston Grove and they asked him where was Rodney McCormick at? And the first thing Mr. Dabney said, oh, he didn't want to come here. As if I was somebody bad. Um, of course, that turns some voters off, but that made those gentlemen call me and also inform me. I'm not here to rag on Mr. Dabney in any kind of way. I don't care less what he does. I just want it to be done right and fair. Because unfortunately, in the past, every time my name come up, I gotta come before the selection board and have to answer questions. And I believe if this, if you can say the things Mr. Dabney said in a city-run building, I'm going to just go ahead and move to dismiss this. Um, I will also just right now to Nancy Mullenauer, um, Daisy Lee, and Greg Coulter. I will apologize to them. I, I just went off the flyer. I didn't have no intent to harm anybody's reputation at this point at all. Um, I was just doing what I seen on the flyer. And we knew that the meetings was always held at the Michigan City Fire Training Center. So those three individuals, I don't, I don't, I don't want to keep them on this complaint at all. But I do want to know about the city.
The name, the names that were on the flyer are unimportant.
So that's where, that's where we are at with this. And if you can do, if you can have, if you can campaign the city buildings, I'm gonna go ahead and just dismiss my complaint. I just no need to keep going forward with this and wasting any more of your time. But it comes to time that you have to, these questions need to be answered by this election board. This goes on way too much, sir.
I, I do have a comment.
Any questions for Mr. McCormick or Mr. Osborne? Go ahead.
No, I don't have any questions. Just comment when, at the appropriate time.
So any questions for these individuals? I just want to, before we discuss, I want to give Mr. Dabney a chance to respond. Raise your right hand, sir.
Yep.
Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, under penalties perjury?
Yes, I do.
And state your name, please?
Brian Dabney.
And how do you respond?
Uh, well, first of all, you know, there was a lot of talk about personal conversations and everything, that, that recorded conversations of, you know, which I sent a text message and said I don't get permission to be recorded. Um, you know, but here nor there, facing the complaint. Uh, I have a letter here. I don't know if you, you have that from the, uh, firefighters local four seventy-five pack that says there was no election event that was held in that building on that date. And here is also the full flyer that if you would have clicked on it on the Facebook page, it would have opened up where you could have seen the, uh, the, um, location of the meeting was at Doom Billy's Restaurant over in Sheridan Beach. And I have, do not say that I'm the president of the Sheridan Beach Homeowners Association. I just participate as a council member in all these different neighborhood groups as I go. And they bring their issues to me and I assist, uh, with help with anything they may have, stop signs, whatever it may be. As I, you know, I, I help out these different, uh, uh, organizations. So none of them receive any city money. Uh, but this is, I just wanted to point out that the, the complaint was, and there was a lot of talking that was let go on about something that had nothing to do with this complaint. Um, about my character and the things that I said in a personal conversation. Once again, that I said, I said to text message, said I'm not getting my permission to be recorded. But once again, you have the letter that says this event did not take place, um, on a city property. And if I come into a meeting and, and I do, uh, you know, say my name and say I'm Brian Dabney, First Ward Councilman, I don't understand the problem with that. Um, you know, Mayor Dermody walked in here and you would, you would say he's Mayor Dermody. Um, so I don't understand why that is considered campaigning, but once again, these, the, they had a chance to, to get off and speak and talk about, you know, my character. That's, that's really what it was all about. That's why they dismissed this. But once again, you have the proof that that was not held on, on city property and that was the complaint. So.
So the letter states that, uh, sure. Letter states there was no event, but you can go back. The letter states that there was no event on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Was there an event in twenty twenty-three there at all?
Uh, nothing political, no. Just have Eastport Neighborhood Association meetings, a neighborhood association at, we use the Fire Training Station because that's a centralized location for the Eastport Neighborhood. And no, no political events. They wouldn't allow it.
Any questions for Mr. Dabney?
No questions. I have a quick follow-up, very, very quick. Every real quick, it won't even be a minute, not even thirty seconds.
Sure. Mr. Dabney, could you just give him one second?
Again, this is not about his character. Um, I will just repeating what we have on recording. Simply, the people from the, um, the pack that he presents, they, they're not at none of our meetings. So what they see and what they can testify to will be hearsay from him. We were at the meetings and he always said he's running for office and this and that. We just want to know, can you use city buildings? It's obvious that this was held somewhere else, maybe. I'm not for sure. But I did do a courtesy to call Mr. Dabney to ask. He could have told me, but he told me the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and one last reply to that. This is like going to my house. I have to invite everybody to my house. This is a private, a private event that is being held at Doom Billy's. Whether or not I invite anyone is none of anybody else's concern if I have a private event that is not held on, on city property. So I rest my case and I felt like I'm having to prove my innocence of not having a meeting in a, um, city-owned building. Yeah, wow.
Well, Mr. Dabney, you're innocent until proven guilty in criminal world, but, and there's a complaint brought before us. We want to hear from both sides.
Exactly.
We don't have our minds made up when we come up here. So I just, I feel like that's how I'm being treated. I don't have my mind made up. Um, I see that this event was held somewhere else. And just like the other complaint about, um, Ms. Denham, I don't know if local elected officials can use city property for campaigning. Um, I think that's what you were referring to earlier. Is that correct?
If I can address.
Go ahead.
When you're done this, okay. Um, first of all, I, I've already indicated my thoughts on, on the Hatch Act. Whether someone thinks this applies or not, gets into issue of federal grants and federal loans, and it should be referred to a special counsel if someone feels it comes under that first. Second of all, um, and you can take this in the form of a motion or whatever, um, I'm gonna move that this complaint be dismissed for the fact that there was no, uh, meeting held at a, uh, uh, a, a political unit, uh, including the, uh, Michigan City Fire Station. However, because, uh, you, you guys have queried us on that and, and, uh, especially Mr. McCormick is, is interested in knowing about whether you can have a function at a politi, or a political function at, uh, uh, campaigning, let's just say, at the local fire station there in Michigan City. Um, I did check downstate with, uh, the Indiana, uh, Democratic Council, um, Matthew Kovice, okay? And it's his opinion, and I tend to concur with him. What this really is, is an issue of free speech, okay? It's an issue of free speech. And basically, in my opinion, what it comes down to is, let's just say that they were holding these rallies or, or, or meet and greets over at the Michigan City Fire Station. What it really comes down to is, uh, the, the, the political subdivision that runs the Michigan City Fire Station should probably allow, uh, any political candidate, um, uh, have an event there, uh, to be equal about everything. And not just whether it's Democrat or Republican or independent or, 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 or a sub-political organization, that, that they should allow any of organization to, to hire that place out, uh, to have an event. And if not, then it might be a violation of the First Amendment. And what you do in those cases, you file them in court, a trial court, to determine whether there's a violation of free speech. So for those reasons, um, I move that this complaint be dismissed. And if it comes up where, um, perhaps the, uh, political unit is not allowing fair access to all political parties, then it may be an issue of free speech, but it's not an election board issue that I see. And, and that's what council downstate indicated to me. And you would file something in a, a trial court with jurisdiction. That's my only comment.
So I agree with you in part and disagree with you in part as well. Whatever employees approving, there, there has to be a specific set of facts here. I don't think that this is necessarily a violation. But if they're, the, the Republicans tried to have a meet and greet and they were denied, whatever government employee denied them would fall under three fourteen, one seventeen. Because that government employee would effectively be advocating intentionally for the election or defeat of a candidate by not allowing the other party or any other party to have their rally. I don't see a problem with a meet and greet on a personal level. It seems very neutral. It's just come, come meet them. Um, even a rally, if, if both sides have the opportunity, I mean, public buildings are our buildings. Our taxes go towards those buildings. And they have meet and greets at government buildings all the time. Um, I guess it would come down to that specific government employee who is approving or denying those requests. Uh, I'll hold my vote until we hear from Ms. Stephens.
I know, I know that just a, a week or two ago, there was, there was a candidate forum in this very room. Um, I know that a week or so ago, there was one at City Hall. So I, there's gotta be something, there's something in there. We just need to find it.
Yeah.
But I, I, yeah.
It happens all the time.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of whether it's one side being disadvantaged versus the other. Um, which should not happen.
Right.
And if it does, then it's a class A misdemeanor. We will refer it.
Right.
So, um, for your information, Indiana is a one-party consent state.
Right.
You're free to record anybody. They're free to record you as long as they're a party to that conversation. This is not legal advice. I'm not your attorney.
Right.
Okay? All right. Um, I'll second that motion to dismiss this complaint with the facts presented before us.
I have those.
Yeah, yeah, those are yours. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on to board member comments. Who wants to start?
Oh, have Jim start.
Jim?
Uh, I'll just say that, uh, looking forward to the election. And, um, I think it'll be a good warm-up for twenty twenty-four. And, um, looking forward to working with the other board members just to, to get it done and have a fair and a good election. That's it.
Okay. Do you like her?
Uh, very quickly, um, if you have been fined by this board, when you come to pay it, we don't take checks, so it needs to be cash only. Um, there is a fund that the election board has. We worked with the auditor's office to find it. There was, I believe, five hundred and fifty dollars in it. And we've added, we've added a little more to that. That does stay with the county election board. That does not revert back to the general fund. So just so you guys are aware. Um, also, for the two of you, I need help with the poll watchers. We have a request for, uh, a group of, or, an individual to act as a poll watcher for a group of independent candidates. And that statute is a little bit sticky, so I'm gonna send it to you guys to get.
Oh.
To write. Every statute is sticky. Uh, but I, I'm happy to issue credentials pretty much to anybody that wants them, but it's Long Beach.
Do you have the code?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's in this mess somewhere.
Okay.
Um, I will find it for you, but uh, I, I don't want to have anybody in there that shouldn't be. But I want to make sure that if, if that individual or if those candidates have the right to a poll watcher, that he's got credentials. So I just want to make sure we get it right. Um, on Friday, this Friday, we have poll worker training in this very room. So we're gonna open up the doors at six o'clock to anybody who wants to see what a vote center looks like. Come on in. We're gonna do a quick little half hour, forty-five minute mock election. Taylor is tickled pink, let me tell you. Um, but we just want, we want our poll workers to be kind of challenged and, you know, we want the, we want the public to kind of see what's going on. And that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay. Um, like I said, we're focusing on new violations. This year is a trial run. The, the funds that we had from the fines is probably because it was never used. Um, so now we're making a list. We're checking it twice. We're gonna see who's naughty or nice, uh, for next year. So file your things correctly. I think there's a problem in Westville with some signs in the font. I'm gonna be that stickler.
Oh, my goodness.
Um.
Before you do anything, we forgot about the amendment to the agenda. The absentee.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Taylor texted me to remind me.
Because it's not in front of me. Um, do you want to cover that now?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't want to interrupt you. I just didn't want to forget.
Sure.
Um, so a little bit of what's going on is we are, we had received some absentee by mail applications. And they were on the old forms, which not really the fault of the voter. I love it when the state wants to change up the forms like in July in the middle of an election. That's always nice. Um, but what happened was, we had one individual who went through and collected the proper form, but put their names in where their signature goes. Um, we did reach out to these people and they don't know this person, so I'm not sure. I, I don't really know what's up with this, but I, I wanted you guys to be aware of it because I don't like it.
Okay.
That's all. I, I don't like it. We, I did talk with our absentee board. We did, we did make the decision. We were going to issue their ballots. Um, but it's gonna be up to this board as to whether or not those are accepted. Again, I, I think the voter's intent is clear. My, my issue is not the voter. It is this individual.
Do we need to take action on it right now?
No. But I wanted it in your hands.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. So we just table it then?
Motion to table.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll resume my comment. Um, I'm looking forward to this election. Um, next year is gonna be abysmal. And have a good night. Sir, motion adjourned?
Move adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.